It's five o'clock, go ahead and call this Selma City Council meeting to order. We do have a call so we can conduct the city business. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilman, um, the shore, if you'd be so kind to give us the notification. At this moment, I'm on this bow here in a silent prayer for the city of Selma, which is, the city stands in need of prayer. Amen. At this time, we'll start for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, a clerk broke off. President Bowie, present. Councilman Bowlin, Councilman Youngblood, Councilman Jackson, Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Reddaw, present, Councilman LaShore, here, Councilman Marvin Thomas, present, and Councilman Johnson. Okay, as stated before, we do have a call. At this time, the character trait of the mind is the tenderness, fulfilling what our consent to do, even if it means unexpected sacrifices. At this time, council members, you have before you the September eighth agenda. I'm going to amend Mrs. Johnson to add one more individual to the, uh, citizens request, Ms. Mary Witten, Public Works Service, uh, that's gonna be addition to the agenda. At this time, are there any other additions? Any other items to be added? At this time, the chairman entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion about Councilman Johnson, second, Reddaw. Any follow-up discussion? Roll call, Madam First, President Bowie, yes, Councilman Bowlin, Councilman Youngblood, Councilman Jackson, Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Reddaw.
Yes.
Councilman LaShore.
Yes.
Councilman, um, Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Our agenda was approved unanimously. Council members, you have before you, I think I emailed each one of you earlier in reference to, uh, Chief Fooford's request. Uh, he spoke very briefly on Thursday at our special call meeting about, uh, getting the AC unit fixed with Dallas Apparition and Heating Company, um, a proposal. It was in the amount of six thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. It will be coming, it will be coming from the Public Works line item. So at this time, the chairman entertained a motion to move forward with this, uh, proposal from Dallas Apparition and Heating in the amount of six thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars.
So move.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson.
Sir.
Do what I was saying. The second, LaShore. Roll call, President Bowie, yes, Councilman Bowlin, Councilman Youngblood, Councilman Jackson, Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Reddaw.
Yes.
Councilman LaShore.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the motion was approved unanimously to move forward with the, um, repair of AC units in the Selma Police Department. At this time, we do, we currently do not have any minutes. Are there any announcements from council members at this time?
I just want to launch a small, really quick. Um, I'm pretty sure we all aware of the activity that going on at the Grace Y on Broad Street. Uh, I took the time to call the, the director at the, uh, Johnson, I think Johnson Walker, and talk to the young man and ask him, uh, about, uh, kinda boding, boarding that up. Uh, cause I, I talked to them back here, uh, over and over and over, time to time again about boarding that, that, that area, um, when it was on other directors. Uh, this gentleman here said, give him two weeks, they're gonna get it cleaned out and try to bode it up. Uh, also, I told him, let me know, cause I'm pretty sure we need to get some, uh, police officers to sit there, uh, to guard, cause this young man is not stable and I don't want nothing to happen to anyone in the process of getting that done, cause just as soon as we clean it up, uh, he gonna get red back there, cause he, he done, he done took another area, which I think he started out there in Rose Selma place and now it's, uh, it's at the Y. Uh, it ain't like I don't see it, and like I say again, we got to get it taken care of, we gonna have to get the officers there and, uh, but he told me give him two weeks, so I'm pretty sure after this week, I'm hoping something get done, cause I told him, uh, I keep bringing this up, but they keep coming on funding, but they need to do their part as well. You know, so I, I wanna keep on funding them, they don't wanna do the little small thing that need be done to these Y M C. So in other words, I want you all to know that I did talk to the director at the Walker, Johnson, Johnson Walker Y M C, and hopefully at, at this week or next week, that they will get that taken care of, cause it looks horrible now, and at least they're bringing stuff right now. And again, I have to get, um, some officer to, to bag the guys up, like boding it up and cleaning it up. And, uh, I think that's, uh, and also, uh, Public Works, I talked to some, um, the guys at Public Works, we need to get some masks, they said they need some more masks out there. I know we got a lot of masks back there, I don't wanna take no mask along to some of the council people, but, uh, I talked to one of the guys, said when they sweating and cutting the grass and sweating so bad, they, they need masks, so, um.
I have some, I can give.
Yeah, so, okay. Well, they need masks, and they said that, uh, I'm not sure how, you know, you don't can get to them, so, I mean, I just need David to talk to someone and, and, and I may have, uh, try to get to them tomorrow for some kind of, please, we just need masks to get out to Public Works, please, please. Okay, yes, and I'll give it to Public Works. And that's all I got for right now, other things can wait.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, for checking the calls and trying to remove that asshole on Broad Street. Uh, thank you so much. Keep us surprised, so, what's going on. All right, I'll hit on now, Council, Councilwoman LaShore, uh, Thomas.
On September the twenty-sixth of this month, uh, I am doing a, uh, citywide, uh, stop the violence, which I do every year, and, uh, due to the COVID-nineteen that I wasn't able to, but in my community, I still wanna, we wanna voice out that, uh, we, um, the gunshots that we're having, uh, I think in some, uh, other wards, they're having them too. So we're going to do, uh. Stop the violence kickoff rally in Ward Seven B, citywide, all elector officials that in your ward, uh, people that lives in your area, uh, invited out to this, where we having, uh, uh, guests coming in, talking about how we, what we can do to, in our community, I'm planning this because the city of Selma, we need this, we need to keep our, put our community first and try to get our neighborhoods involved and come out, and so what we can do to, uh, work with, uh, Selma Police Department in some areas that we having problems in. Uh, it will be September the twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-twenty, and, uh, we will start possibly around in the, uh, evening in town, probably about two o'clock that evening, and I will be talking more about this, uh, on the radio, and then I'd like for all of our, uh, city elector officials in their district to be a part of this, because this is a part of the city of Selma.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas. Are there any additional remarks at this time?
Just one last, I just left, uh, I got a letter thing, uh, I just wanna read real quick if I could. Uh, "The family of Sally Jackson is especially grateful for the resolution extended to our family during our Saturday's time. We give special thanks to the council, uh, for their kind effort in honoring my mother during her illness, and after she went to be with the Lord at the young age of a hundred and three. Since her retirement as the first principal of Knox Elementary School, she was more than just a staple in the community, but she was a community advocate and participated for many years serving on various committees for the city until her health began to fail. She always participated in active activities of her ward for. She was most grateful for being given a hundred and three years on this earth and could still live independently by helping other as she have done for, have done her whole life. She not only lived an amazing life, but inspired generations to do the same. People will not always remember what you have said or done, however, they will remember how you made them feel. You only need a heart full of grace and soul generated by love. Again, thank you for the resolution and honor of our mother and grandmother, sincere Barbara J. Pierce's daughter and Barbara D. Pierce's granddaughter."
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Are there any other announcements at this time? Any other announcements from the ward? At this time, to the citizens' requests, we have three citizens to come before the council, uh, we have a five-minute timeout. First name is, um, Ms. Mandy Carey, removal of bushes. Ms. Mandy? Give, give, you just, give it a second.
Okay, do I need? Um, my name is, is it on? Okay. My name is Mandy Henry, I have a shop downtown and I own various loft apartments and buildings downtown. I'm coming to discuss the removal of the holly bushes on Broad Street. I've been talking to Henry about it for about two months now, they're overgrown and they're blocking all of our storefronts, and it's a safety hazard, and people are using the restroom in them at nighttime, and they smell like urine walking down our street. And, um, I've gotten a quote from a licensed bonded person to remove them, um, because you really can't have volunteers remove them, because there's electrical and water in the, in the places that the bushes are, so the roots need to come up as well. And so Henry and I have been discussing, you know, the removal, so I wanted to come and ask the council, would they approve removal? And Henry may have a line item in his budget under tourism to pay for it. Um, the quote was around four thousand, and we'll have to work with the building inspector on the electrical, just making sure that the power is cut to be able to remove them, probably on the weekend.
Let me thank Ms. Carey for coming to call us, I think that's something that the council can move forward on. Don't come on forward, Mr. Thompson, we have Councilman Youngblood, Councilman Youngblood over here.
Well, um, hey, Mandy, I, um, I understand that all of the floor of downtown has gotten in terrible shade, and I certainly hear what you're saying about volunteers can't, can't cut those down, and remember, we are closing in, um, just, just within a few weeks left of this administration, and I fully believe that with the next administration, that we are not going to have these problems with the, um, things being in camp like this. I would hate to see us totally remove the bushes. I would like to see us cut them back, um, cut them way back, and because for years, these, that's part of our plan, our comprehensive plan, to have some, the, the nice shrubbery, um, but, you know, it may be that, that we do something else, put something else there. I don't think that we want those bare spots there, what?
You gonna say what the arborist said?
Yes, yes, I was, um, I, um, spoke with Jack Rowe, the city's, uh, arborist, uh, he, uh, knew when the bushes actually went down there, and he mentioned to me that it was in his best interest that he thinks they should come up. He says, one, he says they are some kind of sticker bars or something in them which sticks and it's an uncontrollable maintenance problem, and he stated that he had mentioned that to Ms. Sexton when they actually initially put those bushes there, so it was under his recommendation, and he also said that once they come up, that he would be happy to assist us.
They now live their cycle, is that right? They have out lived their life cycle?
Yes, um, Jack Rowe, yeah, he said he would be happy to come up here and, uh, assist with us putting something more appropriate that would not require as much maintenance as a tree that sort of would take at that time.
I, I, okay, I got you.
I would love to save them, but they're, we can't even cut on, I mean, they're, they're just a mess.
Holly's, those kind of holly's.
Okay, you have, Councilman Thomas and Councilman Benjamin.
I was about to ask that question, um, we taking up all those shrubbers all the way down in front of the business, in front of the business? It takes away a, a look, but I'm saying, are they gonna put something else there too?
Yes.
In that spot?
And basically, what he is saying is, he wants us to, uh, and he did mention it in regards to the electrical and the water being in it too, and that's why it was imperative that we get, uh, good contractor to, would know, and wouldn't tear up our electrical system and our water in getting them removed. And then, when we decide what we're gonna go back with, we're gonna make certain that it's gonna go in and give it the look that we want to have there after that time.
They're kinda sparse, some have died over the years, and so there's tons of them in areas, and some there's none, and it would just be better to start, there's a lot of dead, dead ones too, in front of Phoenix Park, dead bushes, like completely dead, so.
Councilman Thomas.
And, um, in this project, um, could you give me priority, um, when did you, uh, start working on this?
We've been working, um, we've been in discussions at least for four months now.
So you've been, you've been in discussion with this, uh, possibly four months, and just getting prices?
Getting quotes, and there's, we've been, we've been passing around a lot of ideas and thoughts in regards to our downtown and our redevelopment overall, and because that's the hub of our tourism, we bounce ideas off of each other, but the main thing that we wanted to do, we wanted, didn't want to come before you all until we had some concrete pricing and some legitimate things that we felt that we can move forward on at this time.
So we, in the process of that, we, we, we bring the information before to us and see what are y'all looking at?
Yes, regardless of what's going back.
What are you planning on putting there, we'd like to see?
Yes, yes, and even, even that, um, Jack Rowe said that he has no problem writing a write-up, basically, you know, giving his recommendation on regards to that, as well as I spoke with him on the cemetery issue as well, which he's more than willing to help us work with.
All right, anything else, Councilman Thomas?
No.
All right, Councilman Benjamin and Councilman Youngblood.
Um, part of what I wanted to know has just now been asked, um, I, I would say, please keep Councilwoman Thomas in the loop when in your meetings, it's four minutes, four months long, and she's the chair of city property and city buildings, she needs to be in the loop, and therefore, uh, we can be in the loop, she can come back and recommend and recommend, uh, to us concerned contractors, bonded licensing and everything, um, I understand Ms. Henry has someone, but who else is there out there, and what is that amount, does it need to be bided? All of those things, during the process, we need to be in the process of it, and the arm, the armorer, um, is he recommending a certain kind of bush as the replacement?
Yes.
We need to know what those are.
Yes, he's.
If this was not conducive, then we don't need to plant, uh, something else, so saying, I, I bet you they say he was not in the first process, it's decent now.
Well, he said, he said that he wasn't in favor of when they went in under Ms. Sexton at that time, but, uh, I guess, I don't know why it, uh, happened, but, uh, he did say that they're not, if you look at most downtown areas, they don't have a bush that, of that type growing in there, because they're extremely high maintenance, and they, uh, also, uh, tend to, uh, outgrow their area, because in some areas, they push up and seed them and everything else, but.
Yeah, so if you can include Councilwoman, uh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, if you can just include Councilwoman Thomas in that particular, we don't want gaping holes downtown, gaping holes downtown, we do want the replacement, but, uh, we do want what's best for, uh, the planting as well, so if you can include her in the process, four months gone, and, and it sounds like she's just hearing about it.
I don't really think it was four, I think it was like G N D gene or something is one of the projects.
Anything else, Councilman, uh?
That's it.
Okay, firewood, Councilman Youngblood, can you help him with putting that right before a major leak?
Yes, the arborists, yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Youngblood.
Um, Henry, I don't know if, has anybody from S R A contacted you?
No, not yet.
And, and that was a great, that was just a horrible oversight on their part, cause some months ago, several weeks ago, maybe the first summer, they had, I know that they had decided that they were going to, you know, the, the downtown development and redevelopment is there what, what the mission of the AC is.
Yeah.
And they were going to be redoing the planters, that was one of the things, so, so someone will be in touch with you about, um, but the things need to go ahead and, and take out the, go ahead and take out the things, but I'm sure someone will be getting in touch with you within the next.
And, and that would be my overall statement, and, you know, regardless of whatever, uh, is, that the removal of those plantings will not be the only issue that has to happen downtown, there's a lot of things that are happening, and we would, I would be more than happy, we would, at any point in time, we can all get together and kinda discuss some of these things prior to us presenting them, cause not even only that, we have to work out the financial.
Right.
Outlay and, uh, design outlay, everything that goes into our downtown, so I'm more than happy to work with anyone that has any ideas in regards to getting this done.
All right, Councilman Johnson, they removed already.
Um, y'all get a bid of four thousand, was that, uh, did y'all get other bids, or that's just the only one?
Yes, that was the only, uh, the other bid that I got, uh, he was not licensed, and I was more concerned in regards to having electricity and water, and that being a big concern and a liability on the city's end, I didn't feel that, um, it was, uh, wise to move forward without having those sense of security in regards to it, and, uh, the local nature of the community there, and they have a very good reputation, and I felt very comfortable with that and what they listed, each one of them.
My last question, now, is, is the trees gonna go just on Broad, come from Water Avenue going on down Broad, is it gonna do all the trees or just the trees?
Well, we're gonna start on Broad Street, uh, going on both sides of the streets, uh, in, uh, areas, and it's, uh, ultimately, at the end of the day, our goal is to get them all.
Okay, but right now, that estimate is just the Broad Street?
Yes.
Okay, so, but we do need to look at on Water?
Yes, yes, there's a Water Avenue aspect and, uh, and a couple of other adjacent streets in which we're, we, we discussed them, but we haven't went that far in depth into town.
I think while we're here, we need to just go in and do it all, and just wrap it all up, if the funding is there, you know, so, no sense playing with it while we get through it and be done at one time.
All right, all right.
Before we, uh, go to Mr. Thomas, this funding, uh, until this.
I, I, my overall, and this is what my thoughts would be, and you all can let me know, I was thinking beautification, uh, in regards to the tourism line item, and that would be kinda in the same line as what it was meant to do, is beautify our downtown area, and if we utilize the beautification funding tourism, that would be, uh, I would have to confirm, I don't know the exact amount, but I do know that it's more than four thousand, I think it's twelve, but I, I need to confirm that.
This, this four thousand, uh, how many, how many bushes do this entail?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and that's not all the bushes that's located downtown?
It's not all of them, but it's the majority of them, and I need to, um, get a basic diagram of every one that's located down there, but that's our primary focus, is to get them all.
All right, I'm gonna go to Councilman Thomas, then we'll move on, but.
Can you, can you tell me the, the location, that the twenty-eight bushes in the area, the location, what area are you planning on?
Yes, ma'am, they start here, right in front of the old Y M C, and they go all the way down past the bank like P and Z, and we have various rose bushes that are lower, these are the real big, huge holly bushes that are ginormous, and, um, you know, at night and time change, your shop owners are coming in and out, and it's a place, I mean, you know, it's dark, and we've kinda worried about it for a while, but I mean, you know, people will just start getting worried.
I'm just interested in the location that, taking the twenty-eight bushes?
Um, now, the trees on the side, like we were looking, I mean, there's nice pretty trees down one of the side streets that are real nice and are red and they, you know, they look nice and their, their cape is up high, it's just the ones, the holly bushes that are huge and round, they, they're so big, they can't even be cut back.
Also too, Mr. Thomas, if you would look, look at the trees along Selma Avenue.
Yes.
The area that's been, you know, overlooked for years.
Yes, um, Jack has already confirmed with me that he will be here in October to do an assessment of some, some of our trees in the cemetery, as well as, um, some down Dallas Avenue, but I will have him to check Selma Avenue as well when he is here.
They really look the light of crystal when they look that light up, but we need to find something to replace it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. David Thomas, Christian tree event, on roof, roof hall.
Hey, how are y'all doing?
Good.
Doing good, uh, my name is James Thomas, and I'm the executive director of the Dallas County Family Resource Center in Selma. Uh, we provide a lot of services to the community, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit, we provide counseling, uh, parenting classes, we have child abuse and neglect prevention programs, uh, we're about to start a workforce development program, um, we, uh, uh, provide homeless assistance, and we're growing our homeless assistance right now, and, um, we have, uh, one grant from the state of Alabama, and we're about to start a federal grant, and so we're hoping to do a lot to address the homeless issue in Selma, and we've been working very hard at that. For the past three years, we have done a fundraiser called the Christmas Tree River Walk, and that fundraiser has been done at the Butterfly Park down by the river. Um, due to the, um, issues at the park right now, we have decided not to do the fundraiser at that park. So what we are asking, and what we are wanting to do, is to use the business fronts that choose to participate along Broad Street and Alabama Avenue, as well as the Songs of Selma Park this year to set up our Christmas trees. Um, uh, if our event is successful as it has been in the past three years, we would like to donate one thousand dollars from our proceeds to the repairs of the Songs of Selma Park. Um, and so what we are requesting from the Selma City Council is to change our fundraiser so that instead of it being at the Butterfly Park down by the river, it would be along Broad Street and Alabama Avenue for those businesses that choose to participate, uh, and then, uh, at the Songs of Selma Park, and we believe that this would help beautify downtown Selma during Christmas, because those businesses that choose to participate would have decorated Christmas trees in front of those businesses. We set up the Christmas trees, uh, the Monday after Thanksgiving, and then we take them down the Monday after Christmas, and so that's the duration that the trees would be up. And again, no one is required to participate, um, it is, uh, voluntarily for those businesses, and then the businesses that aren't located downtown would have the option of setting up their trees at the Songs of Selma Park, um, and that is what I am requesting.
Councilman Benjamin, what is that about, the two fingers right there for a tree?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, I think that's a great idea, it's inviting, uh, lights are inviting, uh, during Christmas time, of the whole entire Christmas season, right after Thanksgiving all the way up until after Christmas, it's inviting, it says that we want you to shop, um, it causes people to go into the businesses, uh, when the lighting is there, we, as you know, we met a problem with lighting the last few years, nobody wanted to put up the lights for some reason the last few years, and I, I think bringing it to Broad Street is even better, and possibly in the future, maybe continuing to have it on Broad Street and down at, uh, Riverwalk, when things are, you know, taken care of down there, uh, lights are inviting, and they, they cause people to also spend money.
That's right, and the Christmas spirit.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I noticed on here you said Phoenix Park, so that was a error there?
It was, and that was my fault, I was misinformed. It was, and that was my fault. I was misinformed. I was under the impression that the Phoenix Park was, uh, under the control of the city, but it's actually not. It's under the control of St. James.
Correct.
So as we went down and viewed the area, we feel like the Songs of Selma Park is actually even better because it brings more attention to the bridge and the bridge area.
I, I'm glad you got it, because it probably on construction soon, I understand, it's gonna be like a park in there soon. I just want, I'm glad you got this right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. James, this is such a wonderful idea and what a, uh, this will, I just, it's so exciting. Um, what are the prices gonna be this year for the small trees and the big trees?
The, uh, it's, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for the small trees, five hundred dollars for a larger tree and then last year we added an even larger tree that was a thousand dollars and those trees were between twelve and fifteen feet. They were absolutely massive.
Yeah, I've gotten a small one every year and I feel, I'm sorry that there's always a wedge, but anyway, I think I've gotten caught, I've forgotten my paper, but anyway, um, I'm hoping that the council can think about doing a, um, one, one of the trees from the City of Selma City Council. Um, so, cause we, and, and we wouldn't have to, you know, when would the payment need to be even by?
We usually request that people pay before Thanksgiving, uh, usually, usually around the.
October the first.
Right, um, cause what we do is we actually, uh, are gonna start as soon as I have permission, sending out letters to all of the potential businesses and then that'll tell us how many trees we need to order. And we order our tree from Marvin's and we need to know how many of what size cause they order them early and then we'll go ahead and pay for the trees and then we are reimbursed as businesses, uh, sponsor the trees.
Okay, that is, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the floor to change the.
Somebody.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson, if you'd follow this discussion.
Rural problem, not a problem.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Right, both with your names, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Ms. Mary Whedon, couple works, service, Ms. Whedon please come forward.
Thank you, Mary Whedon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Mary Whedon and I live at three twenty-five McDonough Avenue and since the last of June, I've been having problems with the trash, people picking up trash out from front of my door at, in the ditch and the grass is growing up through the trash that they don't pick up. About a week ago, I had an old chair, I put it out there, he picked the chair up off of the top of the trash and I have trash there that's been there since the last of June. They slows up there and look at the trash and take off. Pick up other trash out from the other places in the neighborhood. It's in the three hundred block. I live three.
Three hundred block McDonough?
Uh-huh, three twenty-five McDonough Avenue.
Three hundred block McDonough.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Shaw, can you tell that a minute, can you take Steve in the morning, this thing in the morning?
This president, I'd be more happy to do, but this is a problem that's happening all over the city, so this, this is nothing new.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas?
And, uh, the reason why she's here, um, she's, uh, uh, it's been June and, uh, I've been out there myself. Every time she called me and the, the truck do come, the truck came this morning. And for some reason. He slows up there and look and takes off. It's a ditch there where part of the street is caving and it's been there for a while ever since, uh, printed up. And, uh, it's a lot stuck in that ditch and it needs cleaning out. I've seen wood rats out there.
But both of these are garbage?
It's a garbage.
Huh?
It's trash, it's trash.
It's trash, it's wood.
Garbage.
Hmm?
It's not garbage, household garbage?
No, it's, no, it's not household garbage. It's right in the front of my driveway over in that ditch. And we have tree, you know, limbs falling and I have the young man, across the son of mine, I have him dragging the limbs, the limbs out there in the ditch. And they're out there and he won't pick them up.
They should get that, you're right.
He stops and look at it. He picked a big old queen ant chair up last Tuesday off of the top of the trash and I thought, sure, he's gonna pick that up, but he didn't do it.
Ms. Whedon, can I have your phone?
Yeah, you want it?
Councilwoman Thompson.
Well, that's what, you know, she didn't have a ghost, it's, it's not, I told you, it's, it's branches, it's tree branches.
Okay, Councilwoman Shaw is gonna look into it.
Mm-hmm.
Look into it.
I tried to call him this morning, he was stepping out on the road.
No, no, no.
Okay. Great to broaden.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Whedon. Councilwoman Shaw, we make this, uh, a subsidy final from tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the number of. To the mayor of the court, Mayor Melton. Mayor Melton. Mayor Melton, alright, attorneys report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good evening, Mr. President, uh, ladies, councilmen, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I only have two items in my report tonight. They're the two items that were included in your folders for each councilperson and clerk. Uh, those two items are contracts for two prospective workers in the city president's office for election purposes for the runoff. Uh, those individuals' names are there. The contracts include the scope of services, the individuals, the scope of services, the rate of compensation, the term and the account from which those funds are withdrawn to pay for those services. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any other questions for, any questions at this time? I think it's a contract of service like we did for the municipal election, am I correct, Ms. Harrison?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be the same amount, a hundred dollars. Are there any questions?
This ain't the one where we increase up to three hundred?
No, 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 no.
No, that was, that was for poll workers.
Poll workers.
Oh, okay, okay.
Motion on the floor to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shaw, second, by, uh, Councilwoman Johnson to approve the contract for Ms. Tastity Britton and Ms. Penn, Penn.
Yes.
Alright, at this time, Madam Chair.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, the contracts were passed unanimously. Any, any, yes, attorney?
No, sir, but do, do, President Boyd, do for the location of my report on the agenda and, uh, a personal matter that I take care of. I was gonna ask to be excused, but with you and the council.
Alright, any other questions for attorney, how about this, that this is on? Alright, next we have attorney, uh.
Mister Thompson.
Mister Thompson, he's, he's asking me to wait till he. Okay, Mister Thompson?
I just wanted you to finish.
Hello, hello, you have a question?
No, I got, I have something to bring for the, the voting.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a contract to be voted on, uh, due to, um, on the attorney that, uh, he got the information and I needed it to be voted on tonight and he's gonna file it up. So I, uh, for, I have several areas in Ward seven for AG lawn service to go into Ward seven and cut and, um, Madison has the information and, uh, I wanted to move on immediately because it's, it's a area where we need to, um, take care of and, uh, I just wanted to have a vote on.
How, how, how much is the contract?
It is two thousand seven hundred and. How much? Fifteen.
Two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Do I, you're gonna put a motion on the floor to move forward? You say contract in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for AG, AG lawn service? You have a motion on the floor to have a, they're gonna put a motion.
Uh, the same.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor, not from Councilwoman Thomas, from Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Randolph. What other question?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I, I like it. I think it's good, but I don't wanna start something that we can keep up, you know, cause I got some contracts sitting there also that you will be ready to about, you know, two, three days. Uh, and I'm not, I could wait till they counsel me, but if we can do that, I'm, I'm willing to wait. And I talked to, uh, attorney, uh, Madison about that. Just now, what's your, what's your, what's your take on that? You think I need to go ahead and move forward and go on past tonight?
I don't have a problem either way. You spoke and you're doing what you're doing.
Okay, okay, I, I, and I got, uh, with AG and I got, uh, a contract with AG, uh, for, uh, landscaping as well as the total, it is five thousand or something. I came down, Zach on top of my head and then also got a, with Denmark, remove some trees, I think like three thousand something, uh, with that.
Right.
And I just, uh, Mr. Madison, turn it out, have the.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, to be fair to Councilwoman Johnson, he's not just bringing it up tonight. Both Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Johnson have asked me about this before tonight. I just got some of the information today, that's why I said what I did about not having a problem either way to vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and I'll take the motion, vote for Councilwoman, uh, Thomas first, then Councilwoman Johnson just burned yours back. This is for Ward seven, uh, AG lawn service in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Thomas, second, by Councilwoman Johnson, rural problem, not a problem.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, the contracts were passed unanimously. Any, any, yes, attorney?
No, sir, but do, do, President Boyd, do for the location of my report on the agenda and, uh, a personal matter that I take care of. I was gonna ask to be excused, but with you and the council.
Alright, any other questions for attorney, how about this, that this is on? Alright, next we have attorney, uh.
Mister Thompson.
Mister Thompson, he's, he's asking me to wait till he. Okay, Mister Thompson?
I just wanted you to finish.
Hello, hello, you have a question?
No, I got, I have something to bring for the, the voting.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a contract to be voted on, uh, due to, um, on the attorney that, uh, he got the information and I needed it to be voted on tonight and he's gonna file it up. So I, uh, for, I have several areas in Ward seven for AG lawn service to go into Ward seven and cut and, um, Madison has the information and, uh, I wanted to move on immediately because it's, it's a area where we need to, um, take care of and, uh, I just wanted to have a vote on.
How, how, how much is the contract?
It is two thousand seven hundred and. How much? Fifteen.
Two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Do I, you're gonna put a motion on the floor to move forward?
Yes.
You say contract in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for AG, AG lawn service? You have a motion on the floor to have a, to have a, to have a motion.
Uh, the same.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor, not from Councilwoman Thomas, from Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Randolph. What other question?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I, I like it. I think it's good, but I don't wanna start something that we can keep up, you know, cause I got some contracts sitting there also that you will be ready to about, you know, two, three days. Uh, and I'm not, I could wait till they counsel me, but if we can do that, I'm, I'm willing to wait. And I talked to, uh, attorney, uh, Madison about that. Just now, what's your, what's your, what's your take on that? You think I need to go ahead and move forward and go on past tonight?
I don't have a problem either way. You spoke and you're doing what you're doing.
Okay, okay, I, I, and I got, uh, with AG and I got, uh, a contract with AG, uh, for, uh, landscaping as well as the total, it is five thousand or something. I came down, Zach on top of my head and then also got a, with Denmark, remove some trees, I think like three thousand something, uh, with that.
Right.
And I just, uh, Mr. Madison, turn it out, have the.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, to be fair to Councilwoman Johnson, he's not just bringing it up tonight. Both Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Johnson have asked me about this before tonight. I just got some of the information today, that's why I said what I did about not having a problem either way to vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and I'll take the motion, vote for Councilwoman, uh, Thomas first, then Councilwoman Johnson just burned yours back. This is for Ward seven, uh, AG lawn service in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Thomas, second, by Councilwoman Johnson, rural problem, not a problem.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, the motion passed unanimously to move forward the contract in Ward seven. Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to, um, go ahead and, and make a motion to, I got two contracts, one with Denmark tree service and also AG landscaping. Uh, some, uh, contracts in process should be finished up between, uh, another day or so. Uh, and I know we ain't gonna meet until the twentieth something, this work need to be done by the end of Ward eight and I'd like to, uh, make sure it's okay, we go ahead and move forward and, uh, and, and going and, and ask for the votes, go ahead and move forward.
Motion on the floor, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Johnson to move forward.
Second.
Contract working is, and it's rewarding, AGs and also Denmark, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Johnson. Of course, I have a Councilwoman LaShaw. Of course, please, uh, Councilwoman Randolph. Come on, did that, the contract I voted in?
No, that, that's coming up.
Oh, okay.
That's coming up right now.
Okay.
I'm waiting to get to.
Alright, okay. Rural problem, not a problem.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, the motion passed unanimously to move forward the contract in Ward eight. Mister Henry, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, I wanted to, uh, I had two resolutions that I put here before you all. The first one is R one forty-four nineteen twenty. It's the, uh, approval of the agreement between the City of Selma and Serv, Alabama. Uh, earlier this week, we awarded a, uh, Miracore grant, it was a total sum of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and, um, ultimately it requires a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar match. It is similar to the plan in which we've always done annually through our Miracore program in the city and the only major difference now is due to the pandemic and things that are going on now and the Miracore program is moving more to a virtual assistance to our students in the school system and, and helping with the, uh, education aspect of this grant.
Yeah, also too, uh, you know, working in the school system, I know, uh, there's also getting into agreement with the workforce of the valley.
That's correct.
In the high schools.
Yes.
That were working, uh, in the Selma city school, in the, where the workforce of the valley as well as through the high schools.
That's correct.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Mr. President, why are we paying a hundred and ten thousand dollar match money for Miracore to go in the schools? Because the City of Selma in two thousand nine separated from the City of Selma schools. That meant we were not getting the, the funding strength or the tax money for the schools. They get the tax money for the, to do the things in the schools. I would love to do that if we were able to pay the streets, to fix the infrastructure, to fix the things under the street that we can't, that we don't see, if we were able to do the things that we needed to do. Just at our last meeting, we were talking about not, there was a big debate of whether or not we ought to be able to fix the river, pay match money on some, on something to shore up our river. That we have an empty there, a, a multi-million dollar building that's, that could, that's imperil following in the river and there were council members barking at that. Now, now, and we're sitting here, you know, talking about paying over a hundred thousand dollars to put Miracore people in school. Now, y'all know how I feel about the Miracore program. I love it. It's a wonderful program and I would love to, if we were gonna have workers helping here, but we can't even have our, we don't even have a full staff on our payroll. A hundred and ten thousand with staff, you know, a department here. I, I'm sorry, I can't support it this time.
Hold on, let me ask, Councilwoman, Councilwoman LaShaw, if I'm not mistaken, this Miracore grant,
Thank you, John.
Hello.
We have to pro our.
Pass a moment, uh.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, uh I I so I'm gonna advocate for the AmeriCorps program. I think uh.
Who is?
So back to business, so I think uh the presentation is everything. So when we were presented as an education program or presented as schools, then that's how people hear it and that's how people perceive it. But AmeriCorps is a volunteer program for the entire city itself. Not only that, it is a tuition program for those who participate in it. So those who participate in AmeriCorps, those adults who who are trying to get back in the force some kind of way, who participate in it, they can opt for uh the tuition to go to Wallace Community College, to go to Selma University. Their tuition is paid through that, and so uh we're we're kinda, it's not employing people because it's a stipend, I don't think, we can call it employment. But it is a stipend to those who go out and give these rostered services throughout uh Selma. And I don't know if they reached the Dallas County or not.
Yeah, yes.
In the past, they have, but I know it's throughout Selma, uh and and they're, they they volunteer in every realm. Volunteer services is just unmatched. I did have uh the opportunity to ask uh Mr. Thompson, uh is that money placed in grant match? And uh in in the line item, he said that it is, the one fifteen is. And for uh the uh Congresswoman LaShaw to 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 fight to get over half a million poured into that, for the services, and we only have to match with one fifteen, I I think is a golden opportunity in so many different ways.
Please, Councilwoman.
Yes, I I agree with my colleague, uh Councilwoman Benjamin, you know, uh AmeriCorps does a lot for the community. Any event that we had downtown, we had jazz on the grass and helped with that. Had the ten o'clock praise party, came out here with that, we had unity in the community, uh came out and helped with that. Uh I remember uh I carried a hundred kids, well, sixty-five kids to to uh on a ment- uh mentoring trip to Florida. AmeriCorps went with us as shepherdom, so they do a lot, you know. It's not just uh uh school based, uh they 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 help out a lot in the community. And uh they constantly helping every day uh at Selma Housing Authority, they they had G N C helping with with the kids. Uh uh some of the kids that don't have internet, they have internet centers, so they go there to the centers and help them um get on, they do their birthday for school and stuff like that. And also you have to have them at Father St. Edmunds in the gym down there. Uh you pass by there in the morning time.
Oh, yes.
You look through the window, you see like three or four AmeriCorps workers sitting there, and the students are online doing their schoolwork at the Father St. Edmunds. That's every day, and at nine o'clock, you go in there, you just pass by and looking at you'll see them, cuz they have on their AmeriCorps shirts with khaki pants and a hat seal on, so.
Um yeah, I I, you know, we is having a problem um with the kids logging on. Uh my son, I go on in the morning, luckily his mom is able to stay up with him to get to get on. And and she telling me, she said, Michael, it'd be like, uh the class might have twenty-five, thirty kids, and they made them with just ten kids. It's it's on because they don't, they they have a problem. Right, they have a problem, so I hope and pray if we, if this goes, that the AmeriCorps will be able to uh help uh these kids because there's a lot of kids really not even online, virtually, because they're not having the help that they need, you know. Uh luckily, you got some parents are able to stay off their job, but there's a lot of parents chasing, they got to go to work. So these kids is is spending for themselves, but I I'm glad that uh uh Father St. helps them down there doing what they're doing. And uh the uh G N C home, I think Community Builders is doing that. But uh all these kids, the parents need to let the school know that their child's having a problem about getting on because we don't need these kids left behind because of the situation we're going through with the virus and all. But um they, but right now, that'd be a good thing, I hope Dr. Williams come and talk to us.
Also, to give you a sign, I think, I was on the shore, it's a strong advocate of this program, not only is there a strong advocate, um other was the exception who wrote the first grant for the AmeriCorps program up here, uh I think it was two thousand and four or two thousand and one thousand, I forgot. Uh she's the first uh individual to write the grant to move forward with the AmeriCorps. Not only does it tie into the educational part, it ties into the workforce development part, and as well as the volunteer agency part of it. So you're looking at more of a, of a mission form, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, nobody has to convince me of the good that AmeriCorps does. Nobody has to convince me of Mr. LaShaw's impassioned like, you know, I'm not uh Simone after McGregor trying to say that it's a horrible thing. I had, listen, had it not been for AmeriCorps, when we had the law enforcement appreciation fish fry over there at the forge a few years ago, they came and they fried fish and fish fry, they had the event, it was wonderful. They've come and done, when I had uh the cooking school, they've come and helped. So AmeriCorps is great, they do great things. My point is, and here, I think this this, all this discussion sort of crystallizes where we as a council and as a city has gone rock. We've talked about how they have helped at Selma Housing, at Fathers of St. Edmunds. Those are some of the most wonderful things that you can do. And I think AmeriCorps should be funded, I think it it, we need AmeriCorps in the worst way. But we need, the function of the City of Selma is not to ensure that every, that that the children's education is done and that the children have had a healthy homes, those are in other lanes. We're supposed to make sure people have the streets, roads, commutes, you know, sewage that that flush right and and all that stuff. And we're not able to attend to this because we're doing the other things. But I, let me tell you what I would love to see happen. I would love to see, we've got the money set aside for for the um AmeriCorps match, is that what I'm understanding, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. But I think we should do this, I think that we should ask Selma Housing Authority to chip in a little bit. I think we should ask Fathers of St. Edmunds to chip in a little bit. I think we should ask the Selma City School Systems to chip in a little bit. And then I think that that uh we should, should be able to uh depend on AmeriCorps to help us with things some. And and I'm hearing that we have been able to. But but I think that that we should be able to expect a collaborative approach since we are using, does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
And I.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Thompson then, Councilman Randolph, then Councilman.
Okay, I wanted to just make everybody aware, you know, the housing authority uh does donate us their facility at no cost to the city, which actually is an in-kind match of almost a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and and they, what facility you're saying, cuz I was totally unaware of that.
Yes, ma'am, it's um, I don't know.
Whibbison Gym?
Yeah, on Dallas, whatever.
Whibbison Gym and I I do on Dallas Avenue.
Yeah, uh that's where the main AmeriCorps office is, in the computer room that they utilize.
Okay, absolutely, okay.
Is out there at, on Dallas Avenue.
I got you, okay, well, good, that's good.
It is uh looked at too, as well as the county EMA um does fifteen thousand dollars in in-kind services in regards to the teaching of life-saving skills and things that we utilize in that grant as well. There are actually approximately four or five organizations that are involved in the overall in-kind services that work through AmeriCorps that the city actually, it breaks it down to for us to have that one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cash match.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, but um I can, um there is a budget breakdown that will show you each line that other citizens or contributors within the city actually contribute to help with in-kind services. It's just not a cash match or social.
Well, I will understand in-kind matches very well, you know, that's good to know. We need to let the citizens know that.
Yes.
Well, because when when we, and and when that's in the paper, the paper people here, when when that's reported in the paper, they need to know that too, because when, if we think that, you know that the citizens think that. And and they think that we're, we're providing that and that we're not taking care of their streets and and the grass being cut and all those things that they're, they're upset about. So we need to make sure that they understand that too.
I will make sure that that's known as well outside of everything else.
Also, please, Councilman Randolph, do they do anything with the YMCA?
Uh they assist with the YMCA, I don't know in what capacity, but I do know that uh she does work with that.
Councilman Randolph and Councilwoman LaShaw.
No, I was just calling for the motion.
Mr. President, the AmeriCorps program is a city-sponsored program. And this program should not hinge upon whether or not the Selma City School will buy in it with a financial, financial support. It would be nice if they did, but it should be dependent upon that this is a city-sponsored program. And the value of this program is tremendous, and so therefore, I think we just need to move forward with this. The program has proven itself many, many ways, and I think this council need to be in support of continuation of that program. And therefore, I'd like to put motion on the floor again, move forward with this.
On the floor, by Councilman LaShaw, the motion for it. Second. With uh West Houston one forty-four nineteen twenty, second by Councilman, uh and the father discussed. Rural problem, not a burden.
President Booney.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlene, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes, but I believe that we need to to ask all the agencies involved that benefit, um that don't already have some standing again to to, we do to to ask, doesn't need to be a condition, but we need to ask for contribution.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
I agree, we should ask, but whether or not they end up or not, it's oh here, oh there, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yeah.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Uh most, uh our councilors, I mean councilmen. Mr. Thompson, anything else you have?
Uh yes, I have one more, uh I have FEMA disaster mitigation authorization to award services. If you look at, um this is a contract uh to award in our FEMA grant of one point two million dollars, where the city is responsible for twelve point five percent of the match. They are looking for us to move forward in regards to our design and contracting processes. And ultimately, this is for uh street repairs and uh fixing of roads during the flood.
Who's our flood in the north side?
This was uh.
Uh who's flood, who's the flood in the north side here in Dallas?
Uh I'm not sure, but it actually worked its way up through Toya, Styles, and the Alabama EMA up to.
Mr. Hall, you know this?
Yes, he was involved in it.
You know that too, I would want to go, I see this company is not local.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe the local dealer.
Uh yes, that's, that's correct. He is uh, he is a portion of this on the outskirts cuz of the, the sinkhole over on the riverfront that is currently being done, it is included in this FEMA project as well.
President, we have a motion on the floor, so we have a motion on the floor to have a sure, do we have a shot again to open it up?
Certainly.
Have a motion on the floor to move forward um with resolution one forty-five that's nineteen twenty. Infrastructure project not open for discussion, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh I I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you say you gotta go, please?
Yes, ma'am, this is a disaster mitigation grant. Um during March and February of this year, there was a flood and disaster where uh KIV declared a state of emergency for certain cities, and what we did was, we took several uh, no, um, we took uh, um, we took our uh advice from our Public Works Department in regards to areas that had flooded that he had received calls on, and we submitted them to FEMA.
Ma'am, I, okay, I I heard you say that.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me the areas of location?
Yep.
To, yeah, put that on that, that Public Works site?
Yes, ma'am, um the um there is a location on Arsenal Place at the corner of Arsenal and I'm not sure if that's Act Street that it intersects, but it's a, it's a big sinkhole over there. There's a, the Riverfront Park Sinkhole that's located at Two Franklin. Uh it was added into that project, the, the sinkhole over on Highland, which is right off of the, right near uh the, what's the name of the emergency hospital, urgent care, located right there, there's a big old sinkhole in there. There's one off of L.L. Anderson and Marie Foster, that a sinkhole has been created within, and it was included as well. And then there's one in West Haven, there's a large sinkhole over there.
And in the area that you're talking of, for L.L. Anderson, can you give me that location, what what that?
L.L. Anderson and Marie Foster.
Okay, is L.L. Anderson and Marie Foster run all the way across, it's on the.
It's at the intersection.
South side or north side?
It's at the intersection of Marie Foster and L.L. Anderson.
So it's on the, that is on the other side, L.L. Anderson.
Yes.
So Marie Foster, okay.
Yes.
Hey, that, that's a. That's a sinkhole on the corner of.
Uh, 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 this, this, uh.
No, no.
Hey, Councilman Thompson.
Really, that issue is because of, I notice when you get these funds for these these grants, some of the locations that uh you are fixing the the sinkholes in, uh there are some locations that never gets the opportunity uh a bag, we got some terrible sinkholes too. And uh and how often do you apply for this, 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 we just do this one time?
Well, it, based on the the state of emergency, if KIV declares an emergency and was the disaster area at that time, it can be declared if it is deemed to be caused by whatever that disaster it was at the time. It doesn't, everything isn't eligible for it, but if there's something that happened and it may have flooded or we had a disaster, hur- hurricane or something that happened during the city, and it caused this, then it may be deemed eligible based off of KIV making the recommendation. And basically, what we do is, we take our nominations from Public Works because they're out in the field and actually uh give us what's their advice and what we should and shouldn't add to the. Go ahead. Yeah, so that's basically what we go from there, and it basically is a process, and the process goes, it goes through the county EMA initially. They submit it up through the federal office, and then it comes back down. And basically, then they have to approve or disapprove of whether or not they're in agreement with this process and where we go from there.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, nothing else, I'm just.
Councilman, Councilman.
Yeah, uh it's a sinkhole on a, hey, that sinkhole been on the corner of, count who, Johnson.
But Ward Avenue and not the.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, one that lady told you, on, on our Third Avenue and uh, Tri- Third Avenue and Kaiser. There's, there's a sinkhole on that, it been on that for four years. I ain't lying to you, but uh, that's like, y'all don't gotta fix it.
And that's.
Well, Clay Palm might come down, just tell him, give me some cement, I'm putting that hole, it's, cuz it's getting bigger and bigger.
Some breath there on the cook.
Yeah, on the corner.
Yeah, my toe, my toe there?
Yeah.
Yeah, seven hundred dollars for them, I did it. Uh that's on the corner of Union and uh Fourth Avenue, Union Ford.
Yeah, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I will uh look into that as well because I also got an update on your, your situations in regards to where we are with processing those too after we decide, I'll let you know. I talked with uh Ray about both of them. One is, is eligible for the revolving loan that went on the vision, and it will be inputted into that, and they, it will be bid on, fixed.
I called, I didn't announce my call, I already brought my call.
Everybody, you gotta be. I talked to him about that one, as well as I talked to him about the pond as well, he is basically waiting on the splash. He is basically waiting on the splash pay compensation to basically start from there, I think.
Some movements, President.
Yes, sir.
They're, they're holding, when I said, they're, they're holding evidence feet to the fire on this grant application. Is this a standard type application?
Yes, well, if you look at that, um, application that's in there, FEMA didn't put a cost on theirs. They basically just said that the city would be responsible for twelve point five percent of whatever the cost deemed. Once the design and engineering is put all together and then they come up with a total, their costs will adjust in which ours will as well, but ultimately, we won't, we'll only pay twelve point five percent of the total cost. And that includes engineering and anything associated with this disaster.
I understand too, but the, all, all of the requirements, I think there's twenty-two requirements.
Yes.
And the final one is, um, I mean, number twenty-two, they will make a report through the departments of public examines. I mean, is that standard?
Yes, this is, this is a standard, um, application. And what we did with this is we basically, uh, submit documents all along. They have a portal in which you basically just submit different documents at different times. They pretty much make sure you go through the city's procurement policies in which that's one of the things that they require as well as the environmental and any other things that are needed regarding the guidelines of implementing this. But, uh, that's, uh, it's pretty standard for their process across the board.
I just want to make sure that I hold the seven decision mechanism, but the community is not just saying that, that's all.
Oh, yeah. No, no, this is the standard form and they, it's got an agreement number on there. It's, it's across the board.
Have a motion on the floor for the resolution, Councilman George Johnson, Councilman Johnson. And the father, of course, Mr. Tom, roll call number four.
President Booey.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlene, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ashore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Anything else to talk?
Oh, no, thank you. Uh...
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a big question. These contracts we get, uh, under you, under plan developed with Ray Hall?
Grants and contracts.
Big, well, I think they're, they're grants that you do.
Yes, ma'am.
That we be in award, in our award, in our city to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I, I don't know. There's something going on with the, uh, the contractors being subbed out to different, uh, bidders that are not holding up to their standard in the work in our works. And, uh, it's sad that we give, uh, I know everybody, Ray Hall is the only for the city engineer. Well, Mr. Ray Hall is the one. The citizens should not have to keep calling, uh, when you go and tap their property, on their property and, and not fix it back. You tore up their lungs, their grass and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, we're paying, they, they're, they're getting their checks. The city is paying, uh, Ray Hall the money to pay these people off.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, for months and months, uh, some of the people in my area that they came in to tow their, their property up, they, they won't come back, but they gonna come pick their check up, but they won't come back and fix these people property. They won't put the street sign back up. Streets have signed and laying down four months on the corner. And, um, when it rains, the people can't get in their door because it got red clay mud. And, um, and we've been calling Ray Hall and calling him and asking him to come back and, uh, the people want their lawn back.
I, what, my suggestion, and I don't know the whole detail of it, but from what you've told me, if that is the process, we need to go in and write a letter to Mr. Hall because the city hired Mr. Hall to be responsible for this. And he is the person that we can all duly responsible for anything that happened after that time. So, we can put a letter together going forward and make sure that we get the answers that we need and write back. And then we can proceed under that type of pretenses. Uh, they, under certain instances, they can sub out certain, but that's under his company needs to make sure that they are following certain guidelines and that the protocols are taken into place. But we're ultimately holding him and, and their company liable under that. And so, if that needs to happen, we need to get together and do a letter to him and get his response in writing as well in regards to getting answers. And then we can go forward in that process.
Yeah, because it, it needs to be taken care of because, you know, um, we have, these contractors come into our community and, uh, we have stuff that has been sitting there over, for four years where they didn't find it. And it makes our neighborhood look bad. They leave their, uh, the big old pipes and, and they never come back to get it. You keep calling them. It's on Seven University property.
I'm aware.
And we've been calling them and we've been calling them to move it. It's just, you know, they make a lot of money if they leave our community looking like that. You know, people don't, they take pride where they live.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm in a grants with you. And being that it's using federal dollars, there's a whole separate set of guidelines in which they are held to under that standard. So, what needs to happen, we need to get together and put something in writing in regards to getting answers to all of those questions. And then, once we get his response back, then we can proceed in whatever action we do to take after that.
Anything else, Councilor?
No. I, I didn't know that we had a request to, uh, pay contractors before signing off that the job was done. Uh, we had agreed that our contractors are not to be paid until the, it is my practice and what for that. I give the go-ahead to the finance department that the work is complete. I check it. I sent an email and said, what is in this contract is actually has, has been done and a check and be cut. I didn't, that was the agreement, I thought, of the entire body, that, uh, checks are not cut until it is, the work itself has been checked, even with a con- an engineer checking their subcontractors, checking their work as well. Uh, so, we should not even be cutting checks. Even, even a small contractor removing debris, if they take down a house, an abandoned house, that debris should be removed. So, we should not even be cutting checks if the work has not been completed.
That's responsible for the site, and I would just on the site.
And I have been, like you just said, I have been, that's why I've been constantly on it. And, uh, I'm not getting anywhere. I don't think he thinks, I don't think he think we have pride in our neighborhood.
Or you get somewhere, we get somewhere by telling the finance department, do not cut the check.
Well, that's basically what I would say. Uh, I, I totally agree with, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin. That's what I was hitting. Uh, because, uh, Mr. Ray Hall, I have the account, but I feel there are a lot more, uh, followed up and checking to make sure everybody has done their job completely. And plus, make sure, we need to make sure the warranty, we getting the, the federal warranty on every job that, that, uh, they doing. Uh, I think Councilman Randolph had a problem in his board. I'm not sure that they came back and finished that warranty work up or not. But, uh, but again, I, I got a problem on Saint Anne Street. Uh, it was possible after they came to get the work done on Saint Anne behind Hill's funeral home in the project. And I talked to Ray about this several times. Man, when they gonna come down? They just, I thought that how we just paved the whole road, that little segment. They just paved just a little area and it just made it worse. So, uh, I totally agree. I think Ray could be a little bit more cautious about watching these, these guys doing the work since either engineer overseas or that. Uh, and then if a mean calling the councilperson to every area and let us make sure that we satisfied with it, uh, before they, they pay these contractors. But right now, I think we need to do a little better about that and hold them accountable to make sure the job is completed before we pay them.
Now, one, one thing that I can, uh, make mention of that, uh, is a practice in some aspects. Uh, one engineer does the design and another one can do the inspection.
Right.
That way, you're not having a designer inspecting his own information. So, we're not experts in that process of knowing whether or not the work is being done correctly. So, that could be a process we could start to look to utilize going forward with a lot of other projects where we will acquire someone, another person to actually do the inspection of the design work after it's completed.
We need to hire that person.
Yes, it will have to, it will be. Uh, but we're paying it either way. We pay it to Ray as well under the same process. But it would just be, we will just pay it outside of that to someone else going forward.
All right, Councilman Randolph, go on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, uh, a lot of times when, uh, Mr. Hall have a contract to come out or whatever, once they get completed with the work, it's have a year warranty. So, be mindful. Uh, don't let a year slip up and they have been back out there. But they got a year to come back and they got, they got to give you a year warranty. And, uh, because I, uh, they had did a project on, uh, Primrose, uh, put some storm drains down. But it seemed like since they put the storm drain down, it flooded even more at Franklin Street. And so, uh, I had called Mr. Hall and he came back out. And it was determined that it wasn't the new pipes that they had. It was the old pipes. Uh, it's a line that run from, uh, Primrose to behind Silver High School. Found out it's full of dirt. So, we gonna have to, uh, uh, get, uh, what's that, A.I., A.I.S.S. to come unstoppin' or something because there's a lot of dirt in that, in them lines. So, it caused, uh, Fifth Avenue flooded at the end and, uh, uh, Primrose because of, uh, uh, storm water can't get to the, uh, to the, uh, to the ditch. So, just be mindful that we got a year warranty.
All right, ma'am. This is for, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Now, I have to commit a report.
I see the chief is here. I would like to ask...
Sorry, chief.
How you doing, chief? Uh, what's up?
Chief, uh, the council, um, in months past, prior to you becoming the chief, we need to be at home. And we was encouraged to, the new chief, whether that may be, not done as you. Think about forming a cold case unit, murders that, not been solved. I think, uh, Silver has been getting to a certain extent. I haven't heard of any murders in the last two, three months. As a matter of fact, I'm not hearing any bloodshots like we used to have. And I think that's, uh, that's typical to get you, I'm gonna thank for that. But getting back to the cold case unit, I think that's something that we need to consider because little ones still warning the people that are personally caused to death and they're on little one brought to justice. So, have you given it a thought today?
Yes, sir. Um, what I am currently doing, I'm working on the numbers. Once I get to about, um, forty-five officers, I'm going to assign a detective. I'm gonna assign one to get it started. And then from there, as I increase on patrol, I'm going to keep adding to that unit. Yes, sir.
Okay, you, you, uh, you said on the number, there's a comparison, we can't compare number with the silver, but it appears to me that the governmental department is looking at forming a citizen, uh, people. Do you think that's something that would be helpful in silver, to give to afford to better, better understanding of being a member of the police department, given their, their scope of service that they run into the citizen and protect them in the service area? Do you think that would be something that the city would do?
Yes, sir. Uh, Council President Booey and I, uh, we've started that conversation.
All right, chief, just keep it...
Yes, sir.
Real quick, chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you mentioned you're trying to get up to part of our officer. Is there any process that'll mess with them? Officer that we need to patrol and can we hire some retired detectives to come back to try to work these cases instead of mess with the, the new officer? Uh, but we want some dedicated retired officers that are gonna take it serious and not just sit there, you know, uh, not trying to pursue it, especially some officers that might have been on the case before. If someone wanna come out of retirement.
Yes, sir.
You know, and work part-time to help with this. I think that's a good thing Councilman Ashore mentioned and, and I feel comfortable that you will make it happen. But I'm just asking, I feel, if you don't feel good about retiring, just come in and help, then we go ahead with the new guys. But, uh, there's some detectives you already have. But just trying to help out with the day-to-day process. We don't want to inter- interfere with the guys now to deal with the day-to-day. But we get some retirees to go back to the cold case, that really could help a lot to keep people that are running smoothly.
Now, if the council, uh, wants to add, um, part-time, uh, employees, we can do that. We can add, um, because, um, I have some that are willing to come back and work part-time right now. It's not in our policy. So, if the council want to add that, we can do that.
Yes, some experienced detectives.
Yes, sir.
We don't, we, we...
No, we just want anybody.
That's right. Somebody that can go, go to work.
Yes, sir.
Because we need to make sure that we get our money working.
Go ahead.
Chief, uh, I, I can't recall when, but I think it was last year, the city passed the, a ordinance uh, that will give the responding officer to an accident, the authority to impound vehicles that was involved in an accident that didn't have insurance. I, I witnessed an accident. It wasn't a major accident. It was a, it was not accidentally up and down. And I heard the, the two occupants tell the officer that they have insurance. So, I'm, so I'm thinking that should have kicked in, that those vehicles should have been towed in until some insurance has been registered and the main sure they do not have valid insurance. Could you remind your officers, when they respond to a traffic accident, if their, if the people that involved in the accident do not have insurance, they're kind of need to be repaid.
Right, yes, sir.
Councilor Long.
Mr. Long. State, right up there. State, right there. Councilman Benjamin.
I was thinking about, um, what Councilman Johnson was saying, uh, and bringing, bringing back, um, retired detectives and everything. When my, when my cousin went missing, um, one of the detectives that was on the case, uh, named, his name came up. So, we went to Chief Riley to ask, ask him if he would please remove that detective. You know, and then sometimes we're bringing back people who used to be on cases is the reason why the case might not have been solved. And so, I know that you're gonna work diligently on whether it's new officers starting brand-new, overhauling the police department or whatever. And, um, so, if you are thinking about bringing back, um, other detectives, I would like to also pass that name on to you, uh, concerning our family's cold case uh, because this particular, uh, detective's name was called.
I, I understand exactly what she had. And that begins, she just your decision. It just said, I just, it's just a suggestion I made. And I totally understand what Councilwoman Benjamin's saying. There'll be your decision. It's just a suggestion I made by retirees. But again, like I said, that if they came, there's somebody gonna, gonna put their hard work into it, not just, uh, part-time, just playing around. We need them to grind to make sure they solve these cases. And, but again, we don't want nobody that don't, uh, I, I understand totally what you had with that. And, uh, but I agree with her. If it's new detective, yes, let them move forward with that. But if we got some good detective that, you know, retiring, come back and help solve the problem, we definitely love that and save someone as well.
Yes, sir. I always have an open door policy. If anyone at any time wanna come talk to me, feel free to stop by.
Yes, Councilor. Chief, are you ready to go with the new people?
Not yet, we haven't.
Okay, but the council did authorize.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So, what's the...
The gentleman that we spoke to at Stivers in Prattwood, um, he said, contact him after Labor Day. So, we will be contacting him, um, so he can, uh, give us the, uh, the total price on all of them.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I would like to, I mean, you're doing a great job.
Thanks, sir.
And I think we made a wise choice.
Uh, chief, we haven't started, uh, having, uh, the, the, the court back there. The trials have been helping.
Yes, ma'am, therefore.
So, what they do, uh, are they coming into the courtroom or they just...
Yes, ma'am. Every Thursday, what the justice have done, um, we have ten that come in at eight-thirty and then another ten come in at one-thirty. Yes.
And you got your movie there?
Ma'am.
You have your movie there still?
Not yet.
I was hoping too, chief, uh, you're trying to build up a government credit.
That's, that's correct.
Have you ever thought about looking at maybe an assistant chief? I can get it on the...
Yes, sir. I have been looking at that. Um, the police department, um, I knew at one time did have an assistant chief. Yes, sir, I have been looking at that, um, the police department, um, I knew at one time did have an assistant chief, and I was kind of looking at to see why that position went away. And, uh, let's just say I went down or my reserve unit called me up and I'm gone for a year, who would fill in? Then we would have to be, the council have to appoint someone until I come back, but if the assistant chief is there, um, that would be no problem, they can just fill right in on that.
And I think that is one of the important powers of the council, I would check to make sure, but I think that's the important.
Councilman, chief, I'm gonna be honest, there, there are many things that the public needs, the money just not there.
Correct.
The seventeen point four, seventeen point five do not allow you to get what you need. At some point, this, this, this government is gonna have to have the courage to understand that. The new council gonna have to have the courage to understand that the current revenues just not suffice for twenty-first century police. Now, the treasurer had an idea three years ago, I supported it. She said that we added one cent sale tax for one year, that would generate two, maybe three million dollars. Temporary tax, earmark, earmark only for public safety, that would give you exactly what you need to have our officers be able to receive a livable wage, making the entry salary of a police officer commensurate statewide. And if you do that, then you'll be able, I mean, your recruiting pool would be bigger, and you would have some veterans officers living in bigger cities, if the money's the same, might wanna come to small town USA. But the money just ain't there.
Yes, sir.
And the only way you're gonna get there, this council gotta make those funds right, too.
Also, too, uh, chief, last question, um, do we still have that, I can't remember how that grabbed, uh. With the helps with extra patrol, uh, what's the Thompson help there, that grab?
Is it the last grab?
No.
It was not that. So what was it, traffic?
The traffic cop grab, oh, God, I can't think of the name. It helps with extra patrol. Oh, God.
JAG.
JAG, yeah.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we see it, we see it, we have JAG. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, chief.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
You may have JAG, but in fact, in order for you to continue to receive it, you have to, um, uh, have what we call retention. I, I mean, in other words, you just can't use this money and then after a certain period of personal, you have to have a go cause there's no longer money there to keep them at law. So that, that's a requirement, it comes along with that JAG, am I correct?
Well, with the JAG, uh, it's for officers that are already there, uh, maybe we.
Extra patrol.
Yes, extra patrol, uh, high class areas, things like that, if we wanted the roadblocks or things like that.
It's be a roadblock, y'all gonna start making some roadblock, pay, handle some roadblock, we get a lot of the cousins.
Yes, sir.
How we come along with the uniform crime report?
Well, um, our Tyler technology used to be doing, they are actually working on our system now, so we should be back up, um, next month.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, because I know that uniform crime report.
Very important.
First to fit on our federal funding.
Yes, sir.
Because I know we have to submit that, what, every year?
Every year.
Every year.
Last question, chief, let me ask you a question about the, 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 what the, JAG?
JAG, yes, sir.
I noticed back here during the, um, I think land, I was on the, have administration, and, uh, I mean, doing that JAG, I'm telling, I thought it was Christmas, police was there, they were working. Was it because we had more officer on the street? And I'm trying to figure out why we can't do this every day, why I'm not seeing this all the time, it just, and all of a sudden I noticed this particular time, we was getting more cars stopped, more pulled over, more arrests and more everything. And then when the JAG money ran out, then it back norm again. Is it because we got more officer out there or?
Well, like I said, with the JAG, that goes towards overtime and then we can put the extra officers out there, but once the JAG money's gone, then that money's no longer there, so we just have to go back to doing just regular patrol.
Okay, I wonder why.
Yes, sir.
That JAG money has to do the, um, department of justice.
Correct.
My last one, uh, I'm still working on what I asked you about.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I asked my colleagues, the, the council's here now, that, uh, they would help bring our city up to a good standard, but when you talked about, uh, I don't know if any of the council have, uh, uh, made a decision on it, they would like to, to talk to Mr. Ben the sites about what we would like to be in our wards.
Mr. Sexton.
Sexton.
With Cellcom.
Yes.
Yes.
For all of, you know, in eight districts, um, that would help us a lot because the police department will monitor, see a lot of things, see everything.
That's right, they, that would give us access at the police department to all the cameras that's in every ward, that way if something happens and officer's not in that area, immediately we can just pull up on our computer and see what's going on.
So council, we can, we can write it all, all we, um, all we can?
Do they, do they have any K nine officers on you?
Yes, sir, we do have one K nine officer.
Oh, yeah, one?
Yes, sir.
Is he thirty-five?
He is.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, committee reports for closing remarks, uh, staff, Councilwoman, Councilman Rambo. Committee reports for closing remarks.
Uh, no, uh, no report, uh, just wanna tell everybody to stay safe and, and look out for your neighbor, you know, uh. We got plenty of peoples in our city, wanna take profit from you, wanna take profits from your neighbors, you know, so be your neighbor watch. Good night.
All right, Councilman Long.
Look, look, a report, um, Mr. President, I, I did think we were coming to a budget here, I really did. Did you all have it the five minutes I was getting out of the car, coming in here? All right, so when are we having?
We saw, I had this.
Monday coming?
Yeah, I had this conversation, the council might not date it, top of the day.
Okay, okay.
Keep you with the council meeting.
Okay, okay.
We saw a budget that council, you put it, you took it out to, to the media and also the market polls.
So in closing, uh, just, just wanna remind people that we all have a responsibility, uh, this is our community, this is our community. Uh, you can, nine to ten people cannot save Selma, Alabama alone, you have, we have an obligation, uh, to this whole trash problem, um, there are holes where household garbage is outside, outside, right in front of our door. It's either we put it there or somebody came and put it there, so it got there sometime away, okay, it didn't, it didn't just come overnight, so we have an obligation to our city, we have a civic duty to do our part. Um, and, and I'm talking to every one of us, uh, every citizen that's listening via this video and radio and all of it, we have an obligation, one to the other, to take care of our city. I don't need to be calling you if I'm putting trash in a hole and say, come, put, come and pick up this garbage, when I know that I put the garbage out there, then I can pour right there in this hole. And the city has, has a duty to go out and cover these holes that we created. The city of Selma created most of these little holes that we see throughout the city, our public works department created those holes, and so the citizens just start, started to use them as dumping places. And so let's, let's be responsible, one to the other, uh, take care of our city together, ten people alone cannot do that, and this is just a friendly reminder.
Well, yes, uh, the one thing I have in, uh, the recreation department, I got a call from the, uh, after the director at Selma, about the football, at the stadium, they got a game supposedly, uh, September eighteen. And I think they wants to, um, have the, the stadium, but they won't pay us, um, I think the mayor, uh, is not agreeing with that at the moment because of the virus. Uh, and I told her, I don't know what to do, I'm not, the day of the operation, I told, please get back with the mayor on that and see, can they make some adjustment, uh, or go out there with a plan? And let the city, city council see how they try to section off in order to have some fans at the, at the stadium. But I guess, uh, I, this is my thinking, if the school is not allowing the kids to go to school, why are you allowed to come to a game? So I'm thinking that with the mayor, that's my word, I think that's what he mentioned to me, uh, he don't want the city to be responsible for the kids and all, so, uh, I told, I think I said, you know, I went to him several times, about, so, right now, just have a, a standstill right now, but I think the government, uh, Alabama High School, after that, they did, gave the green light for the kids to play football, but, but I guess it'll even up to each city, uh, when it come down to the, uh, for the fans. But in my closing remarks, I, I wanna thank the council for, uh, approving the contract that, you know, bound to get done and water, uh, get some trees cut, and some grass been cut, uh, and I get, get with Mr. A, A G. And the Denmark were in the trees, cut and some grass cut, but I want to take it back on what Councilman Benjamin was speaking, and Councilman Shaw about the garbage. I went down Water Avenue going toward Public Works, and one of the gentlemen told me, man, come on, just look at something. They done got so old, they just stop in the middle of the street, open that door and throw all their garbage right there on the side between Hemmer Break and the Public Works, right on the side of the, about six, seven fresh bags of garbage. And it just got put there, and they just don't care. Uh, so I, I, you know, I turned it over to the Public Works, hoping, praying that they take time to go get that, I'm not sure who gonna go through the bags, but even they go through the bag and find address, and I, I, I'm not even sure whether, um, what gonna happen? I guess, I think the law states that we don't catch them doing it, even though it's a address in there, we still can't do nothing about it, so really, it's like, damn, we do have your dog, you know, so I'm not sure what, what, what it gonna take to get them to stop. But I understood that, uh, Lola Sue, that Mike Ford, and other young lady did checking all the houses at this moment, uh, to see every house supposed, supposed to have a garbage can, so I, I pray that we get this done and get the problem solved. If not, it's like the man go back into our own garbage business, uh, and I don't know how they gonna do that, because it's gonna take money to do that, but anyway, um, uh, we gonna get something done, done real soon, and thanks, and good night.
Back to councilmen, uh, Councilman Long.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I have no report and no remarks, good night, Selma.
All right, Councilman Shaw.
Mr. President, there's no report from my committee, however, I would like to recognize two public works, I'm thinking of two, I know for sure, one, Mr. Green and the other young man is, um, working public works, I just wanna make sure y'all know how very appreciative I am of the work that you guys do. This garbage situation, we've been talking about the garbage that's going on for years, I don't, ever since I got on the council. The only way this garbage gonna be, be eradicated is if you have a mark on the doors and ask change, ma'am, sir, do you have a garbage to suck? And if, and if the answer is yes, then some eyeball put on it. That's the only way it's gonna be resolved, now this indiscriminate driving of your car, you destroy your Kentucky Fried Chicken, you might go bad, you know, that's, that is something that there's no control over. But this hoarding of garbage all over our city is just something that, that this city do not deserve, and it need to stop quick, fast, and in a hurry, and I agree with you, councilman, it is a responsibility to all of us. And not just the council, but the citizen as well, because this garbage that has taken over our city is just unsettling, it don't smell good, and it just, uh, distracts people that visit our city and wondering what, the age happened, what is happening to Selma? And I can't explain it other than people don't have a garbage can. You know, the old saying, you can't put water over the dam once it has flowed, that was a true statement, the fact that we outsourced garbage way back, we ended up with a bad thing to do, but it's, it's been done. But in order to put our, get control of this garbage, there are ways and means that can be done, and it has to be exercised to get that done. So I'm praying that in the future, the new administration will focusing on the garbage situation, unlike the current administration have not done, to get, uh, this garbage under control and get our city back to being a fair city that we have known it for. And something that we can be proud of to say, once again, I'm from Selma, I'm back. Uh, other than that, Mr. President, I just wanna, once again, thank the chief, I think he's doing a, uh, doing a good job and with the minimum limit that the manpower that he has. Men and women in the Selma Police Department deserve all the support that they can get, and I know myself, this council has done that, and we're gonna continue to support the men and women of the fine police departments, um, they truly exhibit the qualities of protecting and serving as their, uh, own, required to do. All in all, you know, Selma's a beautiful place, it can be battled, we got problems, but what, what other city, what city don't have problems? Our city, our problems are not so monumental that they can't be solved, all we need to do is put our head together and come up with a resolution and get things done, because talk is cheap, action is what, what, where the things are bound to make things change, so, let them see, just all have a good night and be safe.
Mr. President, thank the Councilman Shaw, if I, Councilman Thompson, Councilman Rambo.
Councilman Shaw, can you explain to people why the city can't pick up household garbage, you know, because being fined by A D M? Yeah, a lot of people think that the city just can go and pick the trash up, it gonna cost them money, but. What, what, what has happened here recently, the city has been fined twenty-five thousand dollars because when you have garbage intertwined with trash, and the, and, and, and the gentleman driving these trucks, they see trash, and they pick it up, unbeknownst to them, there's household garbage underneath. And when A D M come out to inspect it, that is a violation, we was fined twenty-five thousand dollars, through mediation, we reduced it to fifteen, but we still gotta pay fifteen thousand that, that can go, to do some good somewhere else, nonetheless. So citizens who, who continue to dump household garbage and hold their trash, they're creating a problem for the city, and the city's gonna continue to be radical, you tell them, right? That twenty-five thousand dollars is something that we can deal with, but you let them shit our landfill down, y'all think you got problems, you let them shit our landfill down, we gonna have problem, we just can't even imagine. So once again, it's gonna be up to the citizen to be good stewards and to take care of their city, and the bridges of garbage can, so your garbage can go in the canyon, your trash can go on the, on the curbside. And we all would be happy because we won't be fined by A D M, so once again, this is why we are fined, because garbage is intertwined with trash.
Also, too, Councilman Shaw, we need to follow up, uh, with a correction plan, I know we was charged as a council with the correction plan, I think we have already purchased that quickly, but we need to go ahead and move forward with the additional hiring of employees, like, with the, uh, with the land there.
Absolutely.
And from my understanding, we had a tug of war over how much we should start off with, but the council's job is to appropriate the slots, not to relegate how much they gonna get paid an hour in the job description.
That's it.
You tell me, Mr. President, have they hired?
No, sir.
Well, we, we are.
We improved that.
We, but, but, like I said, we, we have done a lot of due diligence and creative disposition, and that's all we do, because see, you gotta be careful with the slippery slope, because if we go ahead and set the cost per hour, it's gonna be a catastrophic effect, because it's gonna say the council set that amount, and then, you know, it's gonna be inequality in pay. That is the job of the personnel department, in my opinion.
I'm looking to the seat, wow, because that was part of the agreement.
Correction plan.
I'm a part of the correction plan, and, and, and I would hate that we would be finally given to not follow through on something that we agreed to do. And, uh, I'm gonna check, you know, from Mr. Moser first, and then I will go down to the mayor's office to find what is the hell, what is the problem with those three people not being hired and working in the landfill, that would be in a plasma, um, agreement, you know?
And, and keep this in mind, too, council, I mean, with Mr. Moser, I mean, he had more input because he knows basically what they're doing, and he can give a ballpark figure of how much they should start off with, uh, I don't know, have you posted jobs yet?
I have reported this, council.
Okay, please, sir. All right, Councilman, Councilman Thompson.
What you want me to give a report?
The, the closing remarks?
Okay.
Committee report.
Oh, on the committee report, I would like to bring before the body of this council, um, uh, about an event that was had held while we were having council meeting, uh, last, what was it, last Tuesday? Last Thursday, uh, uh, I thought that we had, uh, according to our policy and, and, uh, procedures and order that we have, if anyone's gonna have an event downtown, it's supposed to come before the council, uh, come before the. uh, come before the committee, uh, with this event. We had a event held, um, on the street next to the Performing Arts, uh, whilst we was having, uh, council, uh, council meeting. We had vendors, we had live band, we had, uh, the band was in the alley with the street blocked off, and, uh, people were, you know, and nothing, this was not even brought, uh, before the body of the council. So we need to find out from the Black Belt Benefit, uh, the young lady, they done hired. So if she decides to do another event like that, she needs to come before this, this body. Uh, uh, come before our, we have a building, a committee, the chair first. All this was going on, it's not fair that we pu, uh, put the stimulation on one group and not put it on the other, because that is not, that is, that was totally disrespect to the city of Selma and to the body of this council, not knowing this was happening. And I also called the chief and asked him, was he aware of, he said he didn't know anything about it. So this group took upon their own to, uh, have it along, uh, what they had going on. So we need to, President, we need to make sure that we get in touch with, uh, the, the lady over, uh, the Black Belt Benefit. We need to get in touch with her and let her know, uh, when she plans something like that. She needs to come before the, uh, the body of the council.
Okay, council, too, were vendors involved?
Yeah, vendors, she had vendors and, and, uh, everything, live band, and I just told Clay Carmichael, you know, y'all, you can't do that, you disrespect the body of the council.
Be aware of that?
Yeah, and I let him know that, you, you cannot come here taking over the city streets and-
And that was just all over?
No, it was around, um-
On the sidewalk?
My, from the end, around by the Performing Arts. And, um, and I, and no one, we having meetings, and we didn't even know what was going on till we got out of, uh, coun, council meeting.
What you may wanna do, too, to cover everything, all the organizations that we have, drop them a letter, outline the vendor fees and requires and everything, that's what you can cover yourself. But you definitely could drop the ladder.
Yeah, council, it, it wasn't wrong before, so I'm thinking that they had talked to you about it, uh, had, they came to see the tax office pay for the, and it looked like they just said, uh, they decided to have their own thing, and, uh, we need to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. Because it's not fair.
I know we was in the class with jazz on the grass, you just play jazz on the grass.
So, that's not right.
Jewelry.
We didn't have, uh, it wasn't wrong to the body of the council, that you decided to set up and have a, a live band in an alley, not the alley, it's probably a street that go through there. And, um, you blocked it off and it had to entertain, you had a lot of things going on, and we didn't, this, this council didn't even know, that, that wasn't right.
I would, I would definitely just go in and-
Oh, I told Clay Carmichael, I told him, you stepped out, you, you disrespect the body of the council.
You need to put it right, council, that way they would know before, Councilwoman.
Yeah, that, that is a nice reinforcement, uh, but, uh, you know, the Black Belt Benefit group knows where, they, they know the rules, um, you know, they know the rules, Black Belt Benefit.
We didn't have that sent to them, I know.
Or streets, you can't randomly ju, just block our streets, we have processes, uh, that even we have to go through.
Yeah, that's right.
And I jumped, I jumped through hoops, when I have events, I jump through hoops to make sure every I is dotted and every T is crossed. And, and I contact the fire department, I contact the chief's office, I contact everybody because I want it to, to be corrected. We also hold other events to the fire, like the Jubilee, we hold them, uh, uh, to a, a different standard. You can't pop up on streets and have things, and from, from what you're reporting, you're saying that a live band blocked the streets, and we had vendors, there are vendor fees, and there's a process.
Yeah, we did.
Even my vendors have to pay. I, I, I make every single vendor pay, I even get the, uh, tax license even comes down on that Saturday with the swiper, and to swipe every vendor to make sure every vendor is paid. They come with a swiper on the day of my event, and they swipe every vendor that hasn't paid, you know? We have pop-up vendors sometimes, you know, on the site, so they can collect on that particular day. And I know I see it also at the Jubilee, and I don't know about, uh, other events, I don't attend them all like that. But, um, sometimes we know better, and, and we just take a privilege to do what we please, and that can, that cannot happen.
Yeah, another thing, too, it can be, you know, far from the city by carriage liability, because if something were to occur and wasn't authorized on behalf of the city, because I know that's when Chief Fullford and the Fire Department, they have to have an in and out, you know, going in and also exit.
Safety plane.
Safety plane, and that's also included as part of the, uh, the street vendors and everything. So, uh, I think, Councilwoman Thomas, if you would, go ahead and forward their, uh, correspondence and reinforce it, and that way, if something were to occur, the city would be covered.
Okay, that's why I said I would have a turn. Just, just so you know, um, because I'm thinking you might be a little bit comedic again, uh, just so you know, uh, vendors, there, I, I get a blanket health inspection, like I get a blanket, uh, approval for a health inspection for my vendors and everything, so there's a lot that has been covered before we pop up and have an event. And I, I try to follow every single rule of, and, and the health inspector is involved and food is involved, and feeding the public.
Because everyone have an I T N A suit.
Well, I, that's, that's the end of my report, I just want that, because I don't want them to, this body get attacked of what they did, and we didn't know anything about it. And then they say, well, we have to go to, through the procedures, so why they had this event, and, and no one know, we didn't know anything about it.
And they don't know.
Yeah.
All right, at this time, the chairman, the chairman of all. So, Moser. Councilman Short, something like, Councilman.